And it is in fact seven thirty, so I'd like to say good evening and welcome to the town board of the town of Austin work session for Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first up, I'm going to start with some announcements. And as many of you know, polls are open until nine P M. tonight at the Todd School and Austin High School on the ballot for Briar Cliff. There's a bond proposition related to infrastructure improvements, the school district budget, and candidates for the Board of Education. Austin's ballots have a proposition to purchase a building adjacent to the current Austin High School campus. Austin voters will also cast votes for the school district budget.
Hey, God.
Hi, Liz, we can hear you. Public library budget, candidates for the Board of Election, and candidates for the Library Board. Local elections are your chance to make your voice heard, so if you haven't done your research yet or voted, you only have a few more hours to do so, please do take this opportunity to get out and vote. There has been some big news on the COVID front these past few days. If you haven't heard, over thirty-seven percent of the country is now vaccinated, including forty-nine percent of Austin residents and sixty-four percent of Briar Cliff Manor residents. We are off to an excellent start. Vaccines are now available to all residents twelve years old and up. The Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Ovac, is holding a pop-up vaccine clinic today until eight P M. and will host another one on Thursday from ten A M. to eight P M. Walk-ins are welcome, and you can also reserve your appointment time online. Ovac's a great place to get a vaccine if you're nervous or have any questions about the safety of that vaccine. It's great to have a friendly Austin face at your vax appointment. Over a hundred and fifty million people in the United States have had at least one dose of the vaccine, and a hundred and ninety-six of them did so at the Austin train station pop-up last week. So put on your calendar to call Ovac or your pharmacist or a healthcare provider if you haven't yet gotten yours and get your questions answered and sign up. There have been a lot of questions this week about when and where people are required to wear masks. New York State adopted the C D C.'s guidance yesterday stating that vaccinated people no longer need to wear masks in most settings. If you are unvaccinated or have an underlying immune condition, you are still required to wear a mask. Of course, everyone is still required to mask up in schools, hospitals, on public transit, and a few other communal settings. But I do want to stress one area in particular, which is that businesses can require masks in their establishments. This is the right of their businesses, so please be respectful of their requests. Town and Village offices at sixteen Croton Avenue and the John Paul Rodriguez Operations Center will be expanding in-person office hours for the public starting June first and will remain open from nine A M. to four thirty P M., which is two hours additional from what we currently have. We are still requiring visitors and employees to wear masks in shared spaces like hallways, restrooms, and counters, and visitors will be limited to conducting business on the first floor of sixteen Croton Avenue. All town departments at these locations will be available to visitors during these hours, but if you require a more detailed or lengthy visit, please call the departments in advance to make an appointment or to conduct a meeting virtually. Thank you for your cooperation through this entire pandemic, as we do all of our very best now to remain accessible and safe during these changing times. And now back to a little fun. This week is Hudson Valley Restaurant Week, so call ahead and find out which of your favorite spots are offering great meals and deals. Our restaurants, like many of our small businesses, had a very rough two thousand and twenty, as we all know, so please support our local gems, talk them up to friends, and leave them positive reviews online. Also, today we met, we had the launch of the Mid-Hudson Region Environmental Development Corporation. Now, I can't even remember, Economic Development Corp. Corporation, this is all the regions have different, local regions, we're in the Mid-Hudson Region, and this was the launch of the big grants from New York State. They skipped them pretty much last year, and they're open up this year. I think they're all the applications for these grants are due at the end of July, except there are some that will be rolling, so we will be talking more about what opportunities we have ahead of us and which grants we will be applying for in the not-too-distant future. Finally, I am going to repeat an announcement from last week. This is for residents on McCarthy Drive and surrounding streets. This week, the town's contractor for the road rehabilitation part project at McCarthy began to prepare the site for construction. The town has been in touch with most of the impacted neighbors via an email distribution list with more specific updates, and also our project leader, Paul Frailly, was out there today, the project, and yesterday, and the project team held a Zoom meeting with impacted residents last week. If you live on McCarthy Drive or the surrounding streets that are being impacted by the construction and would like to be on the distribution list, please contact my office by sending an email to dlevenberg@townofosne.com, or you can call us at nine one four seven six two six zero zero one, and we will add you to the list. Do my board colleagues have anything to add? We lost one of our board colleagues.
I believe Councilwoman Feldman's having some internet connection problems.
All right, well, does anybody else have anything that they wanted to add? There was a, I will say that yesterday was Manny De Cruz Day in the town of Austin. Manny was testimonialized, is that a thing? At the testimonial dinner for the Fire Department, he was the outgoing chief, and that was supposed to take place in January. Maybe it was supposed to even take place before that, but in January didn't take place because of COVID, and we were happy to sing his praises on, it was Saturday night, and thank him for all the good work that he did for the town, which definitely involved being the chief while we had some very large fires on Cedar Lane, actually a couple of them, and then one even in the park, and I think he provided over at least a couple of those. So we're very grateful for all of the Fire Department and certainly for the chief and the outgoing chief, so thank you. And I'm just sort of dragging my feet a little, hoping that Councilwoman Feldman can join us again. Is there anything else that we can talk about? If not, I think we're going to go to our first item on the agenda, which is our wonderful tax receiver, Holly Perlouettes, with her departmental report. Welcome, Honorable Holly Perlouettes.
Thank you, Dana, and thank you, everybody, for putting up with the discussion of taxes. I know it's not always the most popular subject, but I have great news. The April Town and County Tax Collection went extremely well. Thank you, Victoria is sharing a screen with you right now. So the top line is the two thousand and twenty-one Town and County Taxes, and you can see as of today, we are at ninety-seven point eight percent of the warrant, which is very, very good, and our Congress, Town Council Feldman just came back up, so I'm glad. I started, we started this without you. So I just wanted to say that our, again, our web usage was great, and people are using that more and more, and, which is terrific. And we also were open late until seven o'clock on the last day of collection was a Friday, and we've sort of made the decision by talking to some of our taxpayers and figuring out the issues that when a tax collection ends on either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, we're going to stay open the Saturday before, but when it ends on a Thursday or Friday, it doesn't make sense to do that because it's a full week before the taxes do, and it has a lot to do with when people get paid and get, you know, government assistance and all of that. So I'm comfortable with the decision. So on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, when a collection ends, we'll stay open on that Saturday before, but a Thursday or Friday, we won't, but we'll stay, always stay open late until seven o'clock on the last, on the last day. And we did get some activity that, that night as well. So that's, that's it for two thousand and twenty-one, and our delinquency letters just went out last week, and I know that people are starting to call, and there's a lot of, and I know we've all been through this once, you know, oh my God, I forgot, and people are, you know, are saying that they're going to mail in a check or they're going to pay online. So I think when, I think the collection will just continue and will, and we'll do okay. Moving down and just going to the total two thousand and twenty warrants, which are still, you know, I consider them still active collections because it's not until July when they will become liens. So we're continuing to collect, but yet you can see that we're ninety-nine point five percent on the Town and County from the year before and ninety-nine percent on the school. So again, I think we're, we're doing well on the, on that, and these, these warrants, the two thousand and twenty warrants, I just wanted to repeat it again, will become twenty twenty-one liens in July. So in June, I'll send out one more sort of, okay, please, please pay, one sort of letter, and to anyone who hasn't, and then it turns into a lien. The next group are all the delinquent tax liens, and I wanted to identify the number of properties associated with each year, so you can see that they're, become less and less. And I can also say that one of my personal things that I look for every month is to make sure that we're at least doing some collections on the, on the tax liens every month, and we are, we always, always are. We still have eleven active payment plans. It's really nine taxpayers because one has a couple, has three, three properties, but we've also had four of the payment plans pay off successfully so far this year, so that's, again, something that I think is, is working really well. I wanted to mention that if you just sort of focus on the two thousand and twenty liens, it started out that we had a hundred and thirty-three properties, so you can see that the two thousand and twenty lien, which is about sixty percent of our total liens, you know, it's, it's less than the half, less than half, it's about, you know, it's, the expectation I have is that about sixty percent of them will, we will get paid on before the end of the year. And, you know, people call, and I understand, you know, some people just, just can't. We do have two large commercial properties in that two thousand and twenty lien, Paradise Oil and Red, Red Lion Apartments, which have liens both in two thousand and twenty and in two thousand and nineteen, and I'm not getting a lot of communication about those, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. Anyway, so I guess the, the takeaways, just to summarize all these numbers, the takeaways is, is that our collection for the two thousand and twenty-one Town and County Tax Warrant went really well. I actually spoke with a whole bunch of our tax receivers in the county today at the Westchester Tax, Tax Receivers and Collectors Meeting. And, you know, there's some towns did, did well, some better than others, but mostly everybody feels like things are starting to just feel a little bit more back to normal. People have new procedures in place, and everyone's sort of settling in, but I'm happy for Austin because I think we, we did okay on that. Again, chipping away at the liens, from the last, from the last time that I spoke with you, we did get payment on the Research Center, and that was about a half a million dollars, so we're down considerably on that. And I'll take any questions that you may have. I also wanted to, you know, to say that, you know, on a continuing basis, I like to have a dialogue with our taxpayers and just get a sense of anything that would make, make things easier for them, and I am getting, you know, good feedback on the email communication that I have as a reminder, and it's the, you know, it's, it's really the only thing I have to respond to people when they call and say, oh my God, I didn't pay late, but I paid, I paid on, oh my God, I forgot, and I paid late, but I paid for the last forty years I've been in this house, can't you waive the penalty? And, you know, obviously, I can't, but to sign them up for the email reminders is always a way to just assure that this won't happen again. And I am also seeing that, and I relate very much because I'm the mother of a ninety-two year old, there are a lot of kids who are taking over the payments for their parents, and they're out of state, so they are so delighted to have this as a, an option for them as well. But, you know, talking to our taxpayers is something that I, I enjoy doing, and I think that it's, it's always a way of trying to improve the process in any way that we can to make things easier, and taxes is not a very exciting subject to most, although I, I shared with Victoria this morning, it shocks me because I find it very exciting. So, but anyway, any questions from anybody?
You want to give a tiny bit of an update as to where we stand with the auction? I think we're going to actually
Yes.
Go to auction on a couple of properties?
Yes, right now, it's one property, and Christie is, has, I guess, the last, I don't know if Christie wants to jump in, but the last rendition of the agreement has to go back out to Malts, the people who are going to manage it, and I'm hoping, they said that they need, you know, just three, three weeks of lead time, so once we get the agreement, we should be good to go. Christie, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, we, we had had some discussions internally about what that would look like in the current landscape with COVID. I think the, the goal was to do the, Malts offers to do it electronically, so that's something that the town hasn't done in the past, I believe. They've usually been held in person, so that would be different. It would also allow for a lot more advertising so that you get as many people informed as possible. They're an established company, this is what they do, so they would be able to reach out to all of their networks. So, you know, hopefully, that would also be a benefit, and this is something that, the town would recoup all of the costs through the sale of the property, so there's, there's no downside to the town from doing this.
Are there any questions for my board colleagues, besides just thank you, Holly, for a robust collection, and thank you to the taxpayers for stepping up even in this very difficult time? We know how hard it is. We've all been struggling, and, you know, obviously, things are coming back now, which is great news, but that doesn't mean that there aren't pieces to pick up from the whole entire year, so we're very grateful for being able to make their payments and working with, with Holly, if, in fact, you know, you have to deal with any kind of late payment, so. Does anybody else want to say anything?
I've had a few residents come and tell me how lovely she was to work with, and a couple that were very happy with Patty in her office as well. They had questions, you know, Holly and Patty were both helpful, informative, and I've got a lot of positive feedback in the last couple of months, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Always, yeah.
Last couple. Just one more thing on the auction, just to make it clear, these are related to defaults on the tax payments that significantly predate COVID.
Absolutely, yes, that's very
And there's, there's current legislation in effect that regulates what can be done now with respect to foreclosure, so just for the board and the public's information.
Very important.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else have anything for our wonderful tax receiver?
Just to thank you.
We'll take them.
My pleasure. I really love what I do.
I'm glad.
Crazy as it is.
Then it's not a problem to you.
Not at all, not, not at all, and we really live in a wonderful community. People are really, really wonderful here.
Thank you.
Glad I settled here.
We are too. Okay, well, without further ado, in that case, I think we're going to go on to the next topic on our work session agenda, which is to talk a little bit about the recommendation coming from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee on communicating the comprehensive plan goals and process of which, by which we do those to the town land use boards and the town board. As the town is in the process of developing a new comprehensive plan, we have heard from some residents asking if the town would consider adopting a moratorium as the plan is being completed. This is a complex issue and a decision that the board does not take lightly. So at the beginning of the year, the town board requested that the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, with guidance from experts at Pace Land Use Law Center, consider the question of adopting a moratorium and come back to the town board with a recommendation. The steering committee participated in a learning session with Professor John Nolan from Pace Land Use Law Center in February, and based upon what they learned, considered this question and presented the town board the letter a few weeks ago with their recommendations. Although the steering committee did not come to a consensus on implementing a full-scale moratorium, they did recommend that the town board direct the town's land use boards to take in consider, into consideration goals, recommendations, and strategies presented in the current draft of the Comprehensive Plan to the extent that they have been released to the public when deliberating over land use decisions. Additionally, should a moratorium be considered by the town board, the steering committee recommended it be limited to development applications that were seeking additional density beyond what is currently permitted under the existing zoning. The town board and our council to the town, Kristi Tomadonna, have had an opportunity to review the recommendations from the steering committee, and tonight, we will be discussing these recommendations, and I think I speak for the entire board when I say that we very much appreciate the steering committee's thoughtful deliberation and continued volunteerism on behalf of the town during the development of the Comprehensive Plan. Before I open it up for the board for the discussion, we do have our town planner Valerie Manostra from Nelson Pope Board, he's here with us tonight, who helped to facilitate the steering committee's discussions on this topic. Valerie, do you have anything to add?
Well, I'm happy to summarize or read the paragraph on the steering committee's letter, if you'd like, or if you'd like to just begin the discussion, we can do that as well. I know the steering committee itself, they really did take a warm, hard look at this particular topic, and while they were not able to come to a full consensus of a moratorium, they did have some additional recommendations specifically dealing with if the board were to consider a moratorium, what their recommendation would be and the limitations of the moratorium. But also in addition, I think the Comprehensive Plan Committee really wanted, had concerns with the, the town board expressing to the other land use boards to take into consideration as much as possible the draft, any draft goals or recommendations or strategies as they look at the various land use applications before their boards, especially in consideration that ultimately, once the Comprehensive Plan is adopted, all, all projects within the town will need to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
Right, I mean, I, I think we both summarized the letter, but if you would like to read it, I, you know, I think it, we kind of just both said the same thing, but go ahead and feel free.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to, me to read the exact, the letter itself, it's short, and then that way it's So based upon comments received by the public and concerns raised by the Comprehensive Plan Committee regarding the need for a moratorium on development until the Comprehensive Plan process is concluded, the town board requested the Comprehensive Plan Committee to provide a recommendation on the subject. The Comprehensive Plan Committee met with John Nolan, distinguished professor of law from Pace University, for a question and answer session to learn about a moratorium, its use within local government, the adoption process, and legal requirements. The committee debated and contemplated the issue of a development moratorium and could not come to a consensus on a recommendation for the town to adopt a full-scale moratorium. However, the committee did find consensus on the following recommendation. If the town board were to consider a moratorium, that it be limited to development applications seeking additional density beyond what is currently permitted under the existing zoning. The committee recommends that the town board directs the town's land use boards to take into consideration the goals, recommendations, and strategies presented in the current drafts of the Comprehensive Plan to the extent that they have been released to the public when deliberating land use approval decisions. The current draft goals were, were attached to this letter, and they're also, actually, I believe they're posted on, on the town's website as well, and the Comprehensive Plan Committee appreciates the opportunity to weigh in on this complex issue and would be happy to further discuss our thoughts on the matter with the town board.
All righty, so to kick it off, would anybody like to comment on what your thoughts are on the subject? We have a couple of options. I think that they're, they're both interesting. I, just in terms of timing, do you want to talk a little bit about timing for the Comprehensive Plan and a little bit about, Valerie, maybe why you think the, there wasn't consensus on the moratorium recommendation?
So I think maybe, I think it would be, before we go into timing on the Comprehensive Plan, I think it would be helpful for the public and maybe the town board, for Christie to walk, you know, the town board through the process of adoption of a moratorium, and then we can talk about how that might delve tail into the Comprehensive Plan process.
All right.
I think it's worth taking a look at a, a moratorium in the properties that, or at least in the cases where it's going to go density beyond, I agree with that, or at least I'd like to see what that looks like.
All right, so Christie, did you want to take us through what it would, what adopting moratorium would look?
Sure, so, I mean, I could also, we'll talk about the moratorium, and then we can come back to the, to the committee's other recommendation.
Sure.
As far as a moratorium, this would have to be done by local law. You would basically be amending the code temporarily to modify what is currently permitted pending an outcome of the comp plan adoption, and then any zone tax amendments that may derive from what is in the comp plan. So it would have to be done by local law, which means it would have, the law would have to be drafted, it'd have to be noticed, you would have to hold a public hearing, and it would also, because it's a local law on a zoning amendment, it would have to be referred to the county planning board for them to review and weigh in on under general municipal law. So that's the process you're looking at as far as adopting this. So it's not just something where next week you could just adopt a resolution just for, for context, and then there are certain substantive issues that would have to be discussed and addressed by the board prior to and then during the public hearing process to be included in the law. For instance, while it is reasonable and it's pretty well-established that review and of the comp plan and potential zoning tax amendments are a valid basis for a comprehensive plan, excuse me, for a moratorium, you have to do it for a reasonable period of time, so you can't just say, okay, for two years, we're going to put this into effect. Generally, what we would see is maybe six to eight months, and then you have to show that you're continuing to make progress in the direction, which is, I guess, where Valerie will come in in her discussion of the continuation of the Comprehensive Plan and any zoning tax amendments that may come out of that. If you have to subsequently put additional extensions of time, that's permissible, it would have to go through the same process, it would also have to be done by local law. So that's just something to keep in mind in terms of timing and how long it would remain in effect. Then other aspects that would have to be contemplated for inclusion in local law, will current applications be exempt? If not, can the process for those applications continue? They just cannot get approvals while the moratorium remains in effect. The board did do a moratorium a few years ago, so I believe it did exempt current applications, but we So I, I believe it did exempt current applications, but we could go back and take a look at what was done in that instance. Generally, you would include a provision for a process to get a hardship waiver for property owners or developers who may be in, have unique circumstances for some reason or another to try to obtain relief from the moratorium. I, I believe this was also in the last one, but I'll double check that, and that's, that's a pretty standard provision to include. Because a moratorium does implicate constitutional property rights, so that's something to consider as well. And then the issue that came up in, in the context of the comp plan committee's recommendation is what do you actually want to be included in the moratorium? And so that's obviously something that would have to be spelled out pretty clearly in the local law itself. If, if density is a concern, there, there are a lot of ways to increase density under the current zoning code, so you know, you have an accessory apartment law, you have subdivision regulations, you could do zoning text amendments or rezoning. So there's, there's a lot of aspects of that, and so we would need to talk about what it would look like if that's the issue of, of what, what's going to be included to address that. So typically, there's a lot there. You don't just, you don't just get up one day and say, you know, moratorium. There's a lot that has to go into it.
Got it.
Christie, could you just give us an idea of what the timing would look like? Is it a month? Is it two months? If you were, if we were going to do something like that, just a, an idea?
I'd say at the earliest, your, your second legislative session in June, possibly into July.
It would be a similar process to the one we went through a few years ago. It would be a similar process to the one we went through a few years ago?
Yeah, and it's a similar process to really any local law that you do. You know, you, something's drafted. I mean, generally, you look at it at a work session. We make changes. If there are any changes to be made, notice the public hearing, send it out for GML review. And then, and then hear what the public has to say. And then if there are any changes that need to be made based upon what the public says.
One of the reasons I'm leaning toward a moratorium is because I, I always feel not so good telling another board what to do, so I'm always leery when, you know, the town board is suggesting another board make a decision, or, I mean, can you talk about that?
Are you saying in the context of the other recommendation that came up? Sure. Um, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea for the land use boards. I, I mean, I think at this point, they, they are mostly aware of it. But for land use boards and the public and applicants to know that this process is happening, because it and Valerie will get into it when, when we talk about, when she talks about the timing of the comp plan, but if this is going to be done in the next few months, it's likely that any applicant that is currently before any of the land use boards or may become, becoming before the land use board imminently is going to be bound by whatever zoning text amendments may come out of the Comprehensive Plan. Unless you're vested in the prior zoning, vested is like the legal concept. And being vested is a very stringent and difficult standard. It's substantial construction and substantial completion. So just getting an approval, even just getting a building permit is usually not enough to vest you. So it would be to the benefit of the land use boards and the applicants to be aware of this and taking into consideration, because it doesn't benefit anyone to spend time and effort going through these reviews only to then down the line have the application no longer comply with zoning based upon amendments that were derived from the comp plan.
But you're saying that, that's true without having a, a moratorium in place that just the land use boards should be aware that we were in the process of overhauling our comp plan or developing a new Comprehensive Plan. And therefore, the direction should be such that the applicants are taking, taking into account what is going on in, in public with the Comprehensive Plan.
I, I think it would be to their benefit to do that, and I don't think there would be anything wrong with, with telling, with making applicants and the boards aware of that. But it, until it's actually in the zoning, it's, yeah, there's nothing to specifically enforce. It's more keeping in mind what could come out of the, the comp plan in way of zoning that could render these projects down the line potentially no longer conforming. But yes, that's, that's true regardless of whether you were to put a moratorium into effect. That's just how I see the other avenue that was proposed by the comp plan committee, excuse me, potentially being beneficial for, for the overall process. That's, that would be happening before land use boards right now.
Got it.
I just don't want to see somebody going down, you know, going down a road and then surprised that if you change the zoning or have any legal reason to complain that, oh, you know, I was doing this and you changed the zoning to that. I mean, they, they should be aware. I mean, whatever legal means, and if a moratorium is how we make them aware, then you know, that nothing's going forward until this is, process is done, or the zoning will be potentially changed, and that they should be very well aware of that, so there's no surprises later.
But if we're in the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Dana.
No, that, I was just gonna ask Valerie to talk a little bit about the timing now for the comp plan, so we could talk about, like, sort of see how the two are aligning, right? The comp plan versus the timing for, to put in place a moratorium. Jackie, I thought that was where you were going, but I'm not sure.
That's where I was going.
Okay, so we have, there are, right now, there are draft overarching goals that have been put forth in the public. And the Comprehensive Plan Consultants WXY are developing draft recommendations and objectives, and those are anticipated to, the draft is to be released within like the next week to the for internal review from the steering committee. And then will ultimately be released to the public within the next few weeks, I believe sometime in June. From there, once we have the draft goals, then they'll be finishing up the actual, and drafts, excuse me, drafts, recommendations and objectives. They'll be finishing up the Comprehensive Plan itself. And once the Comprehensive Plan is completed, at that point, the town board is going to make determinations as to what, if any, zoning recommendations you will like to pursue at that point. It is not anticipated at this point in time to have zoning changes take place along with the Comprehensive Plan adoption, but any zoning changes would take place afterwards. And then they'll be done systematically based upon prioritization of the town board and what you're interested in pursuing. So that, that will add on a number of months after the Comprehensive Plan process. I would assume, based on the trajectory that this Comprehensive Plan process is taking, I would assume that a draft Comprehensive Plan will be completed by the end of the summer, beginning of fall, with adoption sometime in the fall.
Okay, so if, in fact, what Christie's saying is June, July, for when a moratorium would be in place, and then we're saying late summer, early fall, till we'd have the comp plan theoretically approved and adopted at the earliest, right? Or at the latest, or at some time.
I feel comfortable with that. You know, I think that's, it's maybe give or take a month or so, but.
And then there's one other issue, which is the North State Road recommendations, which is kind of happening simultaneously. Looking at North State Road, and that's also been something that the steering committee has been taking a look at simultaneously. That would have some kind of zoning recommendations along with that.
Right, so those will ultimately have, and those will be zoning, not only zoning recommendations, but actual zoning for the town board to adopt. But again, we're anticipating that coming following the Comprehensive Plan process.
Okay. Okay, so now, Councilwoman Shaw, did you want to say something? In terms of timing?
Valerie pretty much covered it. I, I just think it's I, one of the issues I'm having with the moratorium is that we put it in and then we're done in, say, September, so what's the point? So that's what I'm kind of struggling with. But, you know, Valerie pretty much covered it timing-wise, and so did Christie.
But we would have to, then, after we're done with the Comprehensive Plan, start looking at the zoning changes, which will take another four or five months, which brings us right to that six-month window that Christie was talking about for a moratorium.
Right, and let me just touch pace upon the zoning recommendations. So theoretically, you know, we don't know at this point in time what the zoning recommend, what the final zoning recommendations are going to be. But I, you know, based upon the overall goals and based upon where the community has, you know, the discussions we heard from the community, unlike other Comprehensive Plan processes, I don't anticipate major wholesale changes to zoning coming from the Comprehensive Plan process. I think to some extent, for example, with North State Road, there might be more of design and building form, you know, reck, zoning recommendations that might come forth, or some other recommendations that might look at certain, or suggest looking at zoning districts determining of like tweaking some bulk regulations, that type of thing. Unlike some other, you know, zoning, you know, other zoning recommendations that could come out of a Comprehensive Plan, which would be like create overlay districts or replace new, you know, zoning districts. And I don't anticipate that necessarily at this point in time, based on everything we have heard from the public so far, as well as seen throughout the public process. That being said, we're still in the middle of the Comprehensive Plan, so, you know, that is still, you know, that has not been finalized by any stretch of the means, but I'm just letting the town board know that is what I see so far coming through this Comprehensive Plan process.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Meyer, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I've gone back and forth on it a bit, and ultimately, I just don't think that it's necessary to have a moratorium at this point. You know, I understand your point, Councilwoman Feldman. As far as applicants are concerned, but I, I think they should be aware that this process is ongoing, and they choose to proceed, they choose to proceed. But I, I don't think a moratorium is necessary.
Councilwoman Wiltshire?
No, I, I think you covered all of it. It's been covered with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am on the fence. I think I'm leaning sort of away from moratorium, because it doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense in terms of the timing. I know that we spent a lot of time in, in a moratorium, again, earlier, you know, what, five years ago or so? And I'm not sure that it achieved our goals, except for that it stopped a lot of applicants from proceeding on anything, and maybe it wasn't narrowly enough drawn. My thought would be that we ask our professionals to perhaps draft something for us to take a look at. What could a very narrow moratorium look like? Maybe that's something that we can look at and see if it's something that we feel like makes sense to maybe achieve something, but I'm also hearing that it sounds to me like the majority of the board, I'm thinking Councilwoman Wiltshire, that you were not leaning in favor of moratorium. But I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it sounds to me like the board is not leaning in that direction. So I don't know what everybody thinks about, just sort of taking a look at what a limited moratorium would even look like to consider. Is that something you don't even want to do?
I'm willing to take a look at it, sure.
Yeah, I'd, if I could see it, I think it'd be better. But take a look at it.
Okay. Councilwoman Meyer, you're so opposed, you don't care? Like, no, okay.
I just don't think it's necessary, so it's kind of my position.
Right, and I mean, I have a feeling that that's, again, where the steering committee was sort of on the fence of also in terms of just, is it necessary? Is it really going to achieve the goals? I mean, I certainly think that it would be helpful to, at the very least, to have a, a letter drafted that would address the former recommendation about, you know, giving direction to the land use boards in a way that is, seems like it would be helpful. And actually achieve the goal that, that, that part of their recommendation was hoping to achieve. So maybe we could look at both of those options and then come back and talk about them and, and see where we stand. Does that make sense to everybody?
Good idea.
Okay, alright, fantastic. Okay, well, again, I want to thank our Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and also I'd like to thank Christine and Valerie for all of your help guiding the board in this, and with that, I think we're going to move on to the next topic, which is really fun, and I don't think, Valerie, are you staying on for this? Or are you happily leaving us at this moment? Unless, did you have anything else you guys wanted to add before we close? Or questions for the board before we send you off? With this idea of you putting together something for us to, to review and get back to us with?
You know, it's not, it's not uncommon in our practice. And I think Councilwoman Wiltshire makes a good point that, you know, if you're looking at something tangible, it's sometimes easier than when you're talking about it in the abstract. So there's not, I'm not going to be able to, you know, work with Valerie, I'm not going to be able to decide a lot of those, those substantive issues for you, but I can lay out what the law would look like and what your potential options are, and then it might at least help, help the board decide either, you know, you know, we don't want to go in this direction, or it may facilitate a dialogue as to what direction you would want to go in.
Sure. I mean, and obviously, we want to protect the town. We don't want to be putting ourselves in a position of lawsuits and things of that nature, so all of those are considerations that we need to make as well, so hopefully, whatever you draft, you're going to be thinking about that at the top of your mind there, Councilwoman Tomadonna, I know you well, so.
That's always at the top of my mind.
And that would be, that, I think that actually is, would be very helpful for us.
And we'll use the recommendation from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee as the basis of our starting point for discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Alright, fantastic. Alright, so with that, can we move on to our next topic, which is so much fun? We are looking at our draft local law number six of 2021, special events policy. So we're getting close to finalizing the local law, and by Valerie, if you're leaving us, on a special events policy in the town of Austin, there are a few remaining items to discuss. Councilwoman Donna, can you highlight those areas of the law that you would like to get some additional feedback on from the board? And then hopefully, we have heard, we've sent this out to all of the relevant department heads and gotten only back a little bit of input from our insurance agent. But we will reach out to them again and make sure that they didn't miss the email, and they had a chance to take a look and, and weigh in on anything that they think might be helpful for the town to consider as we look to adopt a special events policy that is somewhat informed, very much informed, I would say, by the Village of Austin's special events policy that they adopted, and the reason that we did want to look at that very closely is because these applications usually go through the recreation and park superintendent, Bill Garrison, and, and his department, since we share him, and we think it would make it easier for people to understand what the process would be if it were similar to that of the villages, instead of having two separate, completely separate policies. But we do have some different considerations, and therefore, we have tweaked our local law. In fact, we're not self-insured, so our insurance agent has given us some different insurance requirements that wanted to make sure that we referred to in this, without being too specific, because they do change, and we want to make sure that, I think that they're broad enough that we're, we feel like we're covered, but we're not hamstringing ourselves with a local law that has to change every time. You know, limits are, are changed, or, or recommendations for limits change. So there are some in here now, but I think, again, we're going to consider if, you know, that's something that's referred to outside, that we point to, the policy points to. So as I said, with that, Christie Tomadonna, take it away.
So, um, as you explained, I think the reason for the outstanding items, it's basically because the starting off point of the town and village were different in considering this. And so a lot of the, I think, all, all of the remaining items have to do with either fees or fines, so the monetary aspect of the law. One issue that came up, and I, I think Victoria may be able to help out with the exact numbers, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I can also pull it up.
I think I have it. Which one?
The, the easiest and most straightforward is just setting the application fee. So just for the board's recollection, we're doing this by local law. The fees will go in the fee schedule, which can be amended, which can be set and amended from time to time by resolution. But because we're trying to get this implemented for this season, it would be beneficial to have those numbers in place at the time of the local law's adoption. So that's kind of why we're looking at this now. So the first is to set an application fee. And it probably just be beneficial to mirror what the village did for administration purposes.
You want me to pull up the village's fee schedule? Because I do have it here.
If that's helpful to the board.
Sure.
Okay. Can you see it all?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, so the block party application fee, zero. Special event application fee, twenty-five dollars. Banner application fee, which I don't think we really have a whole lot of banners that go up in the town. Most of the time, they go up in the village, so I would think that that would still be something that would be set by village. Twenty-five dollars non-refundable fee if the event is in Austin. Fifty-dollar non-refundable fee if the event is outside of Austin. Street closing of parking spots and municipal parking spots, again, I don't think that's relevant. Event level one is up to two-hundred-and-ninety-nine in attendance, two-hundred dollars per event. This is relevant. Event level two, three-hundred to four-hundred-and-ninety-nine in attendance is five-hundred dollars for, per event. Level three, attendance exceeds five-hundred, seven-hundred dollars per event, and a security deposit unless otherwise specified. Two-hundred dollars for level one, five-hundred for level two, and seven-hundred for level three. So basically, just double whatever the actual permit cost is, and that is what you're paying. So that's, again, for special events of that size, which would for the most part, be on public property, but could be on private property depending on how it's defined, correct?
Yes.
So if somebody wanted to erect a tent and have an event that would be three-hundred to four-hundred-and-ninety-nine in attendance, that would cost them five-hundred dollars. We can think of some of those events that I don't believe we've charged for in the past. I'm sure a few of us could come up with those in our heads. And that would be new. So I cannot see everybody now. Are we done staring at these numbers now?
One thing I'll just also say is that we are treating block parties differently than the village. The village exempted all block parties from the special event permit. The town board had discussed only exempting it for block parties on dead-end streets. So there, there would be conceivably, if there was a block party proposed to be held in the unincorporated town on a non-dead-end street, they would have to make an application. So, so you might want to think about if you want there to be a fee for that, or if you just want it to be a zero-dollar fee like the village. The other thing is that the village does provide for a street closing fee, so that would go hands in hand really with a block party. Because you're necessarily, I would think, closing access to the street if you're holding a block party. So tho- those fees may be relevant to the board's discussion.
Okay.
So we could easily switch it from a street closing fee to a block party fee, no block party fee.
Sorry, I just, I don't want to speak for the village board, but I think the intent of those street closing fees is really for if you're taking up municipal parking, which we don't have in the town. So the idea of paying ten dollars per space is for recouping the meter fees that they normally would be getting if that was open parking during the day. So it may not be as relevant to the town as it was for the village. I just want to throw that out there.
But now, isn't there a cost for if you need police presence for closing a street or, you know, making sure that you have barricades? No, I guess not.
No, because then it just becomes a special event and you're paying for that via your event level.
I see, so would still pay for the block party if it was over, whatever. Up to two-ninety-nine, you pay two-hundred dollars. What was it, two-five and seven, I believe, right? So.
I thought we were exempting the block parties.
Only if they're on a dead-end street is the way it's currently drafted.
Right, but the question, I think now I'm, I'm a little confused, because I, if somebody's having a block party, are they having an event? And now we're asking them to pay an event fee?
Yes. Unless on a dead-end street.
So if it's on a dead-end street, it's not considered an event?
That, that's the way the law currently stands based upon the prior discussions, yes.
Okay.
I don't really think.
We put that in because the street would have to be blocked if it wasn't a dead-end street. I vaguely remember our discussion.
And it could interfere with traffic.
Right. So that was the reason for, or a need for a fee there, because there would have to be possibly police involvement to block the street or something like that.
And the other thing about the street closing fee is that I understand why it was probably originated in the village, but it, it, it was referenced in the village's version of the law, so because the village had block parties as being exempt from the special event policy, they, they kind of delineated their own separate process for, for handling block parties, and it included paying a street closing fee. So the street closing fee, the way it's contemplated here, would only be for the dead-end street block parties that are currently exempt, as drafted, exempt from the special event permit. But if you need a special event permit, then you submit the application just like anyone else holding a special event, and it's treated the normal way as the, as, as the other special events, not like the exempted dead-end street block parties.
Pretty sure my head is spinning right now. What? Okay. I want to have a party, and I live on a dead-end street. You guys know I don't, but.
Is it a block party?
Well, you know, most of the people that are coming are going to be, you know, people who live on the block. But then I have some extra friends I'm inviting too, so there's probably going to be at least, you know, with kids and everything. I say, you know, there's going to be seventy-five people.
But are you having it on your property, or are you closing the road?
Well, I definitely want to close the road because I want the kids to be able to ride on tricycles on the street.
Okay, then it's exempt if it's on a dead-end street.
So even though I'm having a party, I'm sorry, I'm now having three-hundred people. It's still exempt, or is it now a party?
No, block parties are exempt. They're their own, the, the way, we use the village's law as our starting off point.
Right.
The village had it was block parties are exempt. We discussed that, and the town board discussed carving out from that exemption block parties that are not on dead-end streets.
Can we not charge for the party, not call it an event, but charge if an officer is needed to help close the street?
I mean, that makes sense to me. So I would say that makes more sense. I, I don't know. I thought that's what we were thinking about.
I thought that's what we were thinking.
I thought we were thinking if we need police to be involved, like with a dead-end street, you put a little barricade up, it's no biggie. But if you have a through-street, you could put a barricade up, but you probably might need some help also. And if you need help, that's going to cost money. And if costs.
And then it's a special event, and then you're going through the normal process.
But it's not a special event, it's a block party.
So it's a block party. It's a block party on a through-street, which in the town, this law applies. In the village, it doesn't.
Okay, all right, so.
So yeah, you are paying for the police, you're paying for whoever.
Okay, so if, so if it's a block party on a cul-de-sac, it's not going to cost you anything. If it's a block party, then, then on a, on a through-street, it rises to the level of special event, and then you have to pay a fee based on the, correct?
The only thing, the only thing I would clarify about that is that the way the law is currently drafted is that if it's on a cul-de-sac, which I guess we're saying is the equivalent of a dead-end street, then under those circumstances, it contemplates paying the street closing fee.
Okay, which is.
That's, that's the way the village's was, but the village also had all block parties being exempt.
I feel like I'd want all block parties exempt.
Except you just said you wanted them to pay a fee for, to close the through, through-street.
If, if there's an officer needed, there should be a fee for that.
So then you don't want them exempt. Exempt means they don't pay a fee in this world.
Okay.
So.
Right.
If there's a through-street, there needs to be some kind of intervention, police intervention, so there would be some kind of fee. Yeah, I'm totally confused too, but.
Yes.
Basically, if you have to close off the street, there has to be police intervention if it's a through-street, so there has to be some kind of fee.
Here's, then they have to go through that whole form.
Right.
Yeah, so if you had less than three-hundred people, it'd be two-hundred dollars. More than five-hundred dollars, that's the fee you're paying, just like if you were doing it in another public space.
I think we're, I think we're all having some trouble here, which is there's special events, and then there's the block party. And the block party is either a special event or it's not. So it becomes a special event when you have to close off two streets, but it still really is a block party. So I think we're now saying, are we going to just come up with what the cost would be to close off both ends of the street? And that's what we're going to charge for a block party that is.
Closing fee.
A street closing fee.
Okay.
And then other events are treated differently. So a block party is treated one way. If it's on a cul-de-sac, you got nothing, you don't pay anything. If it's on a through-street, you have to pay a street closing fee.
But it's, but it's not going to be a special event.
Correct.
Right.
That's what everybody's saying.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Anything else? So now, I don't think Kristi's happy, but, okay. Okay, so, so I think that's what maybe we just didn't understand last time around, because I think it was maybe a little confusing. So I think that makes more sense for, otherwise, it seems, it doesn't make sense, why should a block party be a special event when it's on a through-street versus not? It, it's.
Then why would, why would a special event on private property be? What, what's the difference?
So I think what the difference is, and I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm going to say on private property, it's one event that people are being invited to somebody's home versus a block party where the whole block's involved. So it's more likely that you're going to be disturbing all of your neighbors if you're having an event on private property than if you're having a block party where all your neighbors are invited. I don't know. That's the only thing I can come up with that makes sense as to why a block party isn't considered an event.
I'm going, I'm going to get an aspirin.
Well, if it's on a through-street, that'll cost you, but if it's, if it's just on a dead end, you, you don't have to pay for it. I'm just telling you.
Maybe perhaps we should have an offline conversation with Chief Sylvester, or perhaps somebody from the village about what the thinking was behind this, because I think that's also maybe what's confusing us a little bit, is I think they spent a lot of time thinking about this, and we haven't necessarily done that, so perhaps I might clarify something.
We're also going to need a number, right? If the whole intent is to have all block parties be exempt, but you have this street closing fee. I, I, what was it, twenty-five dollars or something in the village's fee schedule? Is that really?
It still says, um, it says ten dollars per spot still, so that I'm also a little confused about. So we'd have to sort of structure it differently, because we don't really have parking spots in the town in the same way, so.
Here's what I'm going to say. I'm going to say that I think it should loosely be based on the amount of time that we would need a police presence to be there. If that's something that we're going to need for the through-traffic to be closed, so based on the length of time of the event that through-street is going to be closed, we would come up with a fee based on approximately an average cost.
So that could, that could conceivably be more than an application for a special event.
That's possible.
I think after the year we've had, less fees, the better. Let people enjoy themselves.
The other question is, how many block parties are there in the town on through-streets?
I don't think it's worth the time that we're taking to talk about it.
That's where I'm headed. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Police, are there any? Do we know of any? I think, and that's how we probably got even, got to this whole point, is that we don't think that there are a lot of block parties. But if somebody decided that they want to have a block, block party on the through-street. So again, is this just a waste of time to get into this and like, can we just leave it as it is and say, fine, if it's, it's considered an event if it's on the through-street, and then you can pay two-hundred bucks? I'm sure that, I'm sure that the block could come up with two-hundred dollars for, for it if needed. And that would partially offset whatever costs might be involved, if that even ever happens. Remember, it's not going to even happen, probably. We can always change the fee schedule also. Or we.
So no fee and no special event for parties on dead-end streets? And have it still be treated as a special event for a through-street?
I think that's the easiest way to do it, for something that I've never heard of happening. The only block parties I know of are on cul-de-sacs. And I've lived here a while.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Basically, because I don't think that there's a lot of these block parties. And it can be changed, unless, if, you know, again, if we want, the only other thing we could do is say no fee for block parties unless police presence required. And if that's the case, then we could come up with a fee. It could just be.
Call it a special event. If, if a police presence is required.
Okay, fine. That's all. Sounds good. And then you pay by the, by the amount of people that you're expecting. Okay, so we're going back to that. Okay, let's go on to the next item for discussion. Do you want to keep going? Kristi, you want to keep going? I think you started, I don't know if you started at the bottom or the top.
Yeah, I was just, I just, sorry, I just went back to look at the other criteria for what makes something a special permit. So excuse me, a special event. The closing of a public street is number one, so. Okay, so I'll, I'll play around with that, and I'll, I'll circulate something to the board. I think I have an, an understanding of the direction you want to go in now. So that was one of the issues, the block parties and street closing fee. Jim Duffy looked at the insurance and indemnity, so unless anyone has any issues with that, we can incorporate his comments. The application fee, does the board just want to mirror what's in the village's fee schedule for the tiers?
That's, that's where it gets too confusing, in my opinion. If we start changing all those around, so I'm good with that.
Okay, the last thing. Oh, sorry, were, were you done? Was there something else?
Um, no.
Okay, and then the last thing was the fines. The village's fines ranged from five-hundred to two-thousand dollars for a first offense. And when the board discussed this, what feels like a million years ago now, there was discussion about potentially lowering that to two-fifty and a thousand. So basically, cutting in half what the village had. I don't know that that's as much of an issue as far as administration, because that would be handled by the police department and the courts. And just the point of not having it be exactly the same as what the village has.
Again, I don't know. I mean, it, while, while I think that the fines seem kind of high to me, the, do we want to go rogue here, or should we just try to make it easier and stick with the the village's pattern? Again, this is something that we could change. Is that true, or is that not true?
You can change whatever you want.
No, I mean, do we have to go through a whole local law thing, or is that something that we reference?
Generally, generally, fines and penalties for violations do go in the law itself.
Okay, so then it's not something that's easy to change. Okay, I'm just going to, we'll just go back around again. Okay, I'm just going to, we'll just go back around again. Everybody, what's your thinking? Greg? I'm going to start with you, Councilman Meyer, sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine just using the same.
Councilor Tom.
It's going to get confusing if we don't use the same.
Okay.
Just also, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but just, just also keep in mind that in practice, you know, the police's practice is, is informational at first. So, you know, unless it's something quite egregious, there's probably just going to be a, hey, you know, you really need to get a permit for this the first time anyway.
Correct. And to a certain extent, I think that these are supposed to be scare tactics, right? They're supposed to scare people into doing the right thing, knowing that there's fee attached if you don't follow the rules.
Or punish a habitual offender, in which case.
Right. Exactly.
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave as is, then we'll, we'll keep with the village. Council, Councilman, Councilman Walter, are you in agreement with that?
With, with the village.
Okay, all right. Is there anything, do you have other? I mean, I think you changed the funeral possession, procession definition per our discussion. You changed wherever it said town or village to municipal where needed, where it made sense. You omitted legally operating restaurants and venues from special event definition. And I think, was that the main?
Basis to deny a special event. If there are, there's already an application that's been submitted for, for a location in close proximity. I think this came up in the context of the parks by the waterfront. And if there's already one and one, it might be too close, even though it's technically a separate, separate venue. And the, the resources may not be there to accommodate another larger event in, in such close proximity.
Yeah, so I think the village should add that in too. Yes. That's good. I think it looks good. We good? All right, fantastic. Thank you all. So Tom and Donna, thank you for your patience with this board. And board, thank you for.
I've said dead ends more in the last 20 minutes than in your life.
Okay, um, I don't know, I, I never even knew cul-de-sac. That's a fancy term. When I was growing up, we just called it a dead end. It's a dead end. That's what it was. I maybe didn't have that fancy round thing, you know, where I lived, but in any case. I think that's it for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of council and personnel? All those in paper? Hi, you have 15, 16 minutes left to vote in the school district and library votes this evening. Don't be late, Todd School or the high school. And with that, thanks for joining us tonight. Please join us next week for our town board legislative session on Tuesday, May 25th at 7:30 PM via Zoom. The executive order most recently put out, which was, I think, yesterday, allows for Zoom meetings to be extended once again through June 16th this time. So we will likely be continuing in this format for the foreseeable future. However, we recognize that we are sort of getting back to pre-pandemic normal. So we'll be starting discussions soon on how to transition back to in-person meetings in the coming months. I know that we're all really looking forward to being back together with each other without our masks. But we're also not necessarily looking forward to traveling around so much because we got kind of used to just like, you know, eating dinner in one room and going to the board meeting in the other room. So that's going to be another change for all of us and we're going to have to adapt. We'll look forward to hopefully being back together in the not too distant future. So stay tuned and don't forget to vote. Have a great night, everybody.